Welcome to our Tuesday, February first, two thousand and twenty-two Committee of a Whole Meeting of the Exeter County Board of School Directors. Mr. Feike, please take your call.
Dr. Anne Herring.
Here.
John Fidler, here. Dr. Andrea Battler. Dr. David Hemberger, here. Michael Chapina. Jason Mel.
Here.
Timothy Morgan, here. Julia Schaper.
Here.
Allison Wilson.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Thank you, Mr. Feike. In addition to the eight board members and attendants this evening, we're also joined at the board table by our solicitor Sharon Montaigne and members of the school district administration, including Dr. Kimberly Minor Superintendent, Dr. Eric Flam, Director of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Dawn Harris, Director of People's Services, Dr. Kristi Haller, Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Brian Feike, who serves as our business administrator, as well as our board secretary. Meeting minutes are attached. Does anybody have any changes or discussions they would like to make regarding meeting minutes for the special voting meeting from January second, two thousand and twenty-two? Committee of a Whole Meeting from January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, as well as the board voting meeting from January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two? We will not be amending the agenda tonight. Takes us to committees. Education Committee, Mr. Kebba.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. The first item on the agenda is a literacy presentation by the junior high school staff. So, if you'd like to come forward.
Hi, I'm Kate Sowers. I'm the librarian at the junior high school. And with us tonight are two ungraded reading teachers. We, Megan Keller could be here, but we've got other help here. And we have all the students coming up tonight just to talk about our new reading program at the junior high and how much it's worth saving this year. Our reading classes this year, we have codes for seventh and eighth grade. Seventh and eighth graders have one whole period of reading every other day. We do have a daily discussion for our elementary graders. One day, seventh grader. It's currently an ungraded class with a focus to connect kids with books that they love to read, give them the time to read in class, to model and practice the real-world reading skills, and also to advance the students' independent reading skills. Our first goal, getting students to love reading, giving them time to read. The things that we've been doing in the classroom this year to have that happen. The first thing we did when they came into school this year was have them fill out a reading interest survey with their reading teacher. They filled it out. They let us know whether they're reading, whether they're not reading. We encouraged them to be extremely honest with us about what they hated, what they liked, what they really didn't like. And then we, as teachers, personally looked at every single one of those for all of our students and gave them personal recommendations of books to study. We then moved on to giving book talks, doing the lounge of specific books, letting students listen to samples of audiobooks, showing them samples of ebooks, and then using Sora, which is our digital resource, as well as my, the library physical books. And Learning Alice is a really great thing that we have for our students who are reading people who love fun reading novels, where students can read at home, on the phone, as well as listen to a real person and they're reading the book at the same time. It really helps. We've also made it so that they have frequent whole classes in the library. Reading classes are in the library every week, twice a month, in case of emergency. And they have access to the library every single reading class. So, every other day, if they want to, they can come down to the library and they can access me. They can access books and they can exchange themselves whenever they want. They all spread up to eighteen minutes to be able to communicate with their students. They'll communicate with their students. Well, number two, we like them to model and practice real-world reading skills. We recognize that a lot of times on the classroom, sometimes we ask them to think that maybe we have adult voice too. So, we've worked really hard to make it that we have. As an adult, you may absolutely agree. One, they can do, here, we took book selfies where they could grab one of their favorite books and take selfies with that book. We had book posters where they were recommending books to others. Most of them were always either what other students were reading. We did author spotlights with them so they could pick their favorite authors and follow that author. We have those things that they can see that. We also encourage them to give some recommendations to their friends. It's really cool to see them start to use that and actually to have some books up before borrowing books. I have today, I have a book today that I've never personally been able to borrow. It's really kind of notes, something that we have adults who I tutor in the classroom. We have something called a Friday reading Tuesday. And that is something that kids get to choose different reading-related activities on a Friday. And so, because we see them every other day, does every other week, don't miss that Friday time. One week, we'll have seven years, the next week, eight years. And during that time, it's all different activities that they, they're all reading related and they seem that they're more interested. It's all these fun toys, which the kids love. They love being able to have that toy. And we actually, ungraded course, so they're doing these things. We've been using the P T A R system, the teaching, the P D I F stuff. And that has been working so well to motivate them to, I can give them a P D I F point and they're really going to find it. Kind of cracks me up a little bit, but I really love it. It's been awesome to get to that slide. This is an example. This is marking three, three, four. We started marking three, three. In marking three, three, we get two pieces. We can work on that Friday time. There's a story competition going right now. The guys can maybe watch this and talk about how much they loved it, right? And so, we're giving them that chance and then we're going to allow them to submit those and allow them to brag about their experiences and learn to vote at the end of marking period or if they're good. We are also allowing, we're doing Instagram posts at the parent's or the mother's parent's. We had an Instagram, and what would they actually post? We're looking at their friends' looks. And then the final one is the comments. We found that there's a lot of good and amazing art in, and a lot of people are looking into art. They love graphic novels. They love the fact that we have plenty of graphic novels in the library and it is okay for them to come out to the library. And we have a lot of looking novels to go with that, and animated books to go with that. So, we really felt that that was a really good thing. Other type of story, the comments, and they're very excited about that. And they're doing this all for P D I F. They're motivated, they're excited. They're doing some stuff. That's what we're doing to the point to make. These are some samples of things that they've created on this stage. They're on the left, it's the book posters that are many in the hallway. The one on the top is their favorite author that one of their students did. To the bottom, they have book cards. They did, we used a bookmark competition, marking period two. And they got to go with one of their favorite bookmarks and that's the book cards. Well, number three is working on this. So, we modeled reading practice in a class. So, instruction in practice, you just write books. Are you able to, you know, you get to go through them or you go through them? Based off of their ability to close their chest, reading books, the guy, exciting or boring? No, it's not. And then one-on-one teacher, during his reading conversation, he talks about their goals, what their beliefs that have, what they're going to do, what they're going to do. Not more. So, looking at some of these, I think that we've got one of these on last year's. Visualizing, you know, how to draw out what they're visualizing. I have, as well as on the right, it's a culture. There's some more, because it's a tough job. There's, you know, a lot of, we've got that group. And then in the middle, there is also what's done. So, this is a simple, first of all, we left here after. And three, if you could stop down what steps you've done for the reading that day, and you have that, you have that. And then I think we're going to do a class. So, for this class, we build a concept, we build, we include the graphic stuff. That's all we need to find what we want. We look at what we're doing, and we can use what we want to read, whether it's a graphic novel, books in the library, ebooks in the ally. Books in the ally, you can use it on the computer, and that's what we're trying to do. Right now, I don't know. So, she's, 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 she's. One other awesome thing to be able to do high is to box the book. We're making a reading classroom. Really, what I mean, I don't sit in front of desks. I like to sit in the classroom, be kids, love it. We were a bit apprehensive as to how this was working, to be able to be here to teach. I mean, what's that? It doesn't look like the typical classroom. It's more of a, it's more of a, a little bit of a coffee shop kind of thing going on. That was totally the vibe we were going for. What it has to be, hopefully, more than just what we're getting back and having it really come to me. The way that we run it is every time, they get to be, that there's just people in there, it's time to keep the course, but the session is done, we're not only to come in. But we do a Monday, today is February first, and today was Geek Quick Day. I actually almost forgot, my third period class, even, but Kelly, it's, it's February first, it's Geek Quick Day. So, whenever they have class starts, when it's, you get to watch this situation, it's looked beautiful, because they love it, they enjoy it, they enjoy it. We also work the answer. We're able to provide a culture reading. We want them to be up reading, we want them to hear us talk, we got books, and we want them to understand that we have these books that we got from them. And to really make it clear we hear them. Because it's not always, like, your readers, especially when you're seventy-three. We do, so we have the project leaders, where, like, we can see, and everything. And so, we want them to understand that we, we too, have this ability. So, we have our self, we have the top, have Mississippi service, and we have allies. Allies, and we do this thing, always want to find one after the other, not only. And then we have our self people that are still up there in the top. We give them, that's what I'm doing, on February first, Tuesday, probably. So, the last thing we have for our students, we're gonna do this, this is from our own house. It's on this day, this one is on their Chromebook. So, their part is this. Although the digital quality may not be the best, they did this, they ran with it. And again, they did this for P D I F points, and if you're hundred percent, we wanted you all to know how awesome this reading practice, how grateful they are that they get this opportunity to do their thing. And then, I want to know what was your favorite part?
My favorite part of the new reading class is that it's not a grade, because I never liked to read, and now I can just read freely without it being graded.
My favorite part about reading class is Genius Day Friday. I like how we have freedom to choose what we want to do, and we can just do whatever we want.
Now, reading class is the library.
One thing I like about reading classes is that I get to read any book I want.
I like that reading class is a graded, and we get to relax our minds with reading books.
One thing I'm doing about reading class, how it's basically that I'm gonna be here and shaking my glass.
Well, I like the fact that reading class, or reading class, is I like, oh, they actually reading class, and so, it's been a work.
I like that I get more time to read, and also, I, that they read a lot, and I've got a lot of good books like this.
One thing that I like about reading class is that it's not graded, and you don't have to stress about another thing.
About reading class is that we have an open library. You can go any time, and we have lots of books there. We have comfy spots at the library. My favorite time, when, when we go to the library for reading classes, we get to sit in the comfy chairs to read. My favorite part about reading.
My favorite part about this new school, about the new reading class, is that it allows you to read your favorite books, and it's a fun, quiet, and enjoyable class that you can always go and know that you're gonna have a good time.
One thing I like about reading class is you get a shit on comfy seat, and all you can do is read, and it's not graded.
One thing I really enjoy about reading class is having the comfy chairs around the classroom, because it's just nice for me to sit down and read my book comfortably.
One thing I like about reading classes is that you can read books with a book at a time.
One thing that I like about reading classes is that I get to read my book around my friends and being comfortable at the same time.
Part about reading class is that, that we can have comfy seats and have our own books.
My favorite part about reading class is that you can choose your own books.
My favorite thing about reading is the comfy seating and the teacher.
My favorite thing about reading is sitting.
Okay, so I really like reading class because it's not a class, and you sit there in your mind. We also have the junior try to teach, so we teach, so, yeah, I do really reading class.
Reading class because I get to choose what I want to read.
My favorite part about reading this year is all the comfort and true that we get to relax.
My favorite part about reading class is being able to pick your own seat.
What I enjoy most about the reading class this year is that it's a stress-free period, and I can go into those classes knowing that I don't need, that I didn't need to study for anything, that I can just go in and relax.
One I like about reading class is that I can look for lots of new books in its free file and history, and I can, ungraded, so I don't have to worry about doing more correct and do the grades.
My favorite part of the class is that it's not graded and use of class competition every quarter.
My favorite thing about the reading class is the junior short form. We have a reading class on time.
My favorite part about reading is that we can read peacefully, peacefully, without feeling we've graded our assignments.
My favorite thing about reading class this year is that it's not for, that we can read our books, and.
My name is Braden. The thing I like the most about reading classes is that you get to find new books and then see what, like, you actually like to read, and actually get the chance to read more with, like, being quiet, not getting interrupted.
My favorite part of reading class, like, is get to chill, maybe have a seat on my other class.
There's a lot of things so great about reading class, but I think my favorite one is just, like, a whole class period to just read.
Yeah, I like that it's, like, not graded, so then all, like, the pressure of trying to make sure you're doing everything correctly.
Yeah, exactly.
To try to, to get the best grade possible.
Yeah.
Out of, like, all of the classes are graded, but this one is not.
I'm just happy that you're not graded on reading.
Yeah, we're not graded on our reading.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a late class for a lot.
Exactly.
Oh, our favorite part of reading is go to the library, find a book.
Yeah.
My favorite thing about reading class is getting to be, that is, that is good.
My favorite thing about reading class is being able to sit in a comfy seat and have to dance for forty-five minutes.
We like reading because it gives us so much adventures.
Yes, and that's all we have. Thank you so much for your time. It was a pleasure to share.
Does anybody have any questions?
I actually have a couple of questions. First, I just wanted to say that I've heard about this class, and I've heard great things about it, and the students are really excited about it. So, that's exciting when we hear things like that. My question is, how many minutes are they actually spending reading per day?
So, we give a time, we have a reading class, we give a to read. We see them, if anyone, I will to meet, I'll see them every other day. So, we tell them for twice a week, and the next week will be three times. So, we always have at least two class periods that's reading, and then on a Friday, it's that genius day. So, every, so that would be about eighty minutes, because we're looking at. Now, I mean, sure, that could be a little bit of entry time and that kind of thing, but ideally about eighty minutes, okay? I mean, and occasionally, we'll have to do a quick five, and I think at the end. So, sometimes you might pull a little bit of time on a staff, but I would say about reading.
Have we seen an increase in, in books going out in the library, in circulation?
Last time I checked, was thirty days ago, and there was a twenty-five percent increase in book circulation from the year before the pandemic. I didn't think it was fair to judge the pandemic.
That's awesome. Yeah, thank you so much.
I had a question, if I could. The, the students, do they have access to electronic books?
Yeah.
Okay, is that part of the program?
Overdrive ebooks, it's called Sora now. So, we have electronic ebook library, seven through twelve, have access to it. And we have seen that really skyrocket as well this year. Students are very interested in, there's a lot of students who like to read on their Chromebooks. Having said that, there are a lot of students who also hate to read on their Chromebooks and prefer paper books. So, we let them have the choice of whichever way works best.
And does the library still maintain a selection of newsprint, magazines, journals, that sort of thing?
Honestly, a few years before the pandemic, that was slashed from our budget, and I refunded that I'd be able to start doing that again this year. So, right now, we have five periodicals that are going out, and I just put that back in the budget for this coming year, asking for five hundred dollars so that I can have those magazines going out, right? Sports Illustrated and Sports Illustrated for Kids right now, every time the students see that they're on the shelf, and I take that, can I read that? I'm like, of course you can read that, that's what, if you take it down off the shelf and read it, they're very excited about it.
I have a question. Just curious, and maybe it's directed more towards the district, but what, do we have a good working relationship with, with our Exeter Community Library and the district? And, and what have we been doing to try to work together or utilize their books if we can't find a book, just things like that?
They're absolutely amazing. I love them. I literally, if I can't find the book in the junior high library or right in the high school, I pull up the public library site right there, and I'll look for it. Say, if you have a library card, if you don't have a library card, I'm there for an offer exactly how you can get one, and, you know, here's, here's how you get the books. In addition to that, last year, I showed everyone we should do this again, the students. There's a way that they can connect their, sort their Sora account, their ebook account from the public library and our library together, if they have a library card. But I do agree that that's something that we should do forward. We should be more integrated with them. So, that's something I think we'll be doing in the future.
Two questions. Has a student ever brought a title or an offer to you and asked if you could get a book?
Every day.
Oh, good, 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 good.
Every day.
How about Harry Potter?
Harry Potter goes out of the library all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know if you saw the disturbing headline. This is just what I needed, disturbing headline today about a, a caster, I believe in Tennessee, who is arranging a book burning. Doesn't that break your heart?
It does.
And Harry, the Harry Potter books were on his list of books that were going to be burned.
That breaks my heart.
Yeah.
Almost all the Harry Potter books are out of the library right now. They're very popular again, cycle by cycle.
The other question, I saw something on one of the slides about writing stories. Is writing about books students read, is that part of the reading program?
So, we don't have them do large writings about the book. I'm not a big fan of book reports, because I don't like to do that as a book myself. So, we, I wouldn't say it's large writings that we do at all, because that's more in the LA class. We say some, we do these kinds of larger writings, to help with our book forces. We have them do small writings about what they're reading, and ours tend to be more book recommendation oriented, that kind of thing, recommending those books to others. Things that you, as an adult, might actually post on, like, a book read post or something, book writer, you, you do on Amazon about a book, because those are the things that will probably have influenced you as adults in real life, not write books for you. So, I'm not answering your question.
No, that's fine. It's a, a part of my writing, a career, do a book review. So, maybe we have some future book reviews.
And we actually, we didn't include that, but we actually have them, our front catalog in the library has the ability to see that. We actually get, that was an option in the summer period where they can go onto the front catalog and read through that book, and it's how it's, and then it actually goes up on the front catalog to help people. I, I've just, I always close those out, but they're still doing it. I just approved two of them today. I had students in the library today, and that's the two ones, they started, they come through, like, off the table.
Wonderful, good, thank you.
Mr. Fidler.
Other question?
Oh, may I just make a statement? I just would like to say that these women who took the reading course and, and our librarian, Ms. Sowers, are just absolutely phenomenal to work with. We had great conversations this summer about their visions to carry this out. And I don't know that I've ever worked with secondary teachers who had so much enthusiasm for kids and books, and they have just knocked my socks off. But every time I go to the junior high, I love to stop by and just see kids quietly reading in, like, a soothing environment. I think, you know, one of the takeaways, listening to all the kids, is there is so much stress in the lives of everybody right now, and to actually have a place that's, when you walk in, it's just serene, and to see that many teenagers actively engaged in reading their books, not talking to each other, not pinching, I mean, I think, I think they really just thoroughly enjoy their teachers and the environment they've created and, and the books, and I just can't say enough good things about this team at the junior high. They are really knocking it out of the park for kids, so I want to thank them personally.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, next we will hear from superintendent, Dr. Minor.
Okay. Sheldon, can I have the whole screen? All right, I'm gonna be providing a mid-year overview of where we are with some of our district data. In the beginning of the school year, I showed you slides about where our students were with their reading at our three K to four buildings. And as you know, one of our goals is a hundred percent reading proficiency in third grade. We know that this is a multi-year goal, but we said that we would stop periodically and check on our progress that they have made today. So, I'm going to take you through a lot of slides, and I'm going to try to point out some really exciting elements of them. So, this was Jacksonwald's kindergarten at the fall. And if you remember, that white line that goes horizontally through the graph is the proficiency benchmark. The blue color is students who are on watch. They're, they're not quite where we want them to be. The yellow are kids who need an intervention of some kind. They're enough below the benchmark. And then the red is kids who urgently.
They're enough below the benchmark and then the red is kids who urgently um needed an intervention. So just to remind you of the things that we have done thus far this year in the just the first semester, we've completely changed our reading program to the Fonda-Seninell um classrooms. Our teachers had a a ton to learn and they've really done a fabulous job executing that. And then also we changed our response intervention model and our teachers are also had new materials to work with and 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 new things to learn. So this data is even more uh exciting um and amazing, given the fact that all the teachers were new to all of these materials. See what uh phenomenal work they did. So this is Jackson Wells Kindergarten now. And these charts are a little tricky, so I want to draw your attention to the fact that the bottom of the fall chart started at five hundred, the bottom of the winter chart starts at six hundred. And the line for proficiency was below seven hundred and now it's at seven thirty. So it's a moving target. Even with that, like you can see a dramatic difference in the number of kids now in kindergarten who are proficient uh and how many fewer kids are in need of an urgent intervention. So in just half a year, they've done an amazing job of getting kids um much closer to where we want them to be. And an important thing in our in our philosophy is the earlier we can intervene for kids and have them be successful readers, the better that is. The longer they go without being successful, the more difficult it is to change that for them. Uh this is Lorraine, again, all the same things, five hundred to six hundred, where the line is, it's their fall. And then this is Lorraine's data now. Again, you can see a tremendous amount of growth in the in the number of kids who are in green, uh a tremendous reduction of kids who are in the in the red and the yellow. So they've really been doing an outstanding job. Watten Creek, their fall. And Watten Creek's winter. Again, you can just see how many kids are over that proficiency line much more solidly, even though that line has gone up and such a significant reduction in the kids who need intervention. So we're really very pleased with kindergarten data across the board. First grade is challenging in terms of using the STAR data, so that kindergarten report was based on the STAR screening report. Because at the beginning of first grade, they take the STAR early literacy and in the fall and the winter, they take the STAR reading assessment and so it's not really comparing apples to apples. So in first grade, we look instead at where they are with their benchmark assessment, which is called the VAS. Uh that's an F and P where the students um read the books to the teacher and the teacher notates errors, that sort of thing, and and determines where they are in the leveling system um that has a prescribed goal for each part of the year. So in first grade, students are expected, if they're on grade level, to be at a D at the beginning of the year and by this point in the winter to be at a level G. And so Jackson Wells first grade saw a four percent increase uh at students who are at grade level in this first half of the year. And of those not yet at grade level, sixty percent have gone up three levels or more. So first grade's really had a challenge this year because so many kids came out of kindergarten with pandemic and everything else, not really having uh gotten to a D and that journey to a D is really challenging and then kids tend to take off. So I'm really excited to see how this plays out um winter to spring, given that getting these kids up three levels means that they're in that D, E, and F range for the most part. Same with Lorraine. They've had a five percent increase total at the grade level and of those not yet at grade level, seventy-two percent of them have made uh growth of three levels or more in the first half of the year. And a Watten Creek is an eight percent increase towards students who were at the grade level expectation and of those not yet at grade level, fifty-five percent have gone up three levels or more. So first grade is such a challenging year for teachers um and such a huge year of growth for kids. They really go from just barely reading simple text to to actually being readers. So again, they're doing a phenomenal job in all of our first grades. In second grade for Jackson Wells, now we, this is the STAR reading, so the kindergarten ones were the STAR STAR early literacy. So the scale is different here. Um but again, it all basically means the same thing. You can see the horizontal benchmark line. And then you can see where they are in the winter. And again, here, the bottom of the fall starts at six hundred, the bottom of the winter starts at seven hundred. So you have to kind of picture the graph, so you can't really line them up because the numbers are a little bit different. You had to be at about an eight sixty in the fall. Now you have to be at about an eight ninety to be proficient. And again, in Jackson Wells second grade, you can see the tremendous growth in students who are proficient and the significant reduction in students who are in need of an intervention. Very impressive data. Lorraine, same chart, and Lorraine now. Again, you can see them shrinking the number of students, um actually, I think that's a yeah, shrinking the number of students. You can see it's nine hundred again. Um so they've done a nice job there as well. And then a Watten Creek. You can see a dramatic increase in their second graders' proficiency level and a dramatic uh reduction in their students in need of intervention in the second grade and fourth grade. In Jackson Wells third grade, there's the fall numbers. And the winter numbers, again, you can see a remarkable decrease in the number of students who are in that urgent intervention category. We're already starting to get at the point where a lot of the students who remain at urgent intervention already have IEPs or identified as needing special education support. So we'll start to see kind of that separation of students who really um need an individualized education plan to get where they're going in reading. Um but a significant movement of kids out of the urgent intervention into the intervention and out of um the on-watch category into being proficient readers. And then Lorraine, fall. And Lorraine, winter. Again, a really nice increase in the number of students who are reading proficiently, again, a changing bar, um but they're they're making good gains, particularly in the group of students who are on watch, moving them into proficiency. And then a Watten Creek in the fall. And a Watten Creek in the winter. Again, I'm very excited about the number of students who are over that proficiency line that's now at nine fifty and you can see it was it was previously about nine forty. Maybe it's got nine sixty now. Um but again, really nice growth. And it does get much harder to see rapid growth now as we hit third and fourth grade. A Watten Creek's uh fourth grade data. And their data now. Again, they're sus- they're sustaining, but it gets increasingly hard because the students have already gone through several years where they weren't intervened for. Jackson Wells fourth grade. Jackson Wells fourth grade is really seeing a nice condensing of the students who were uh at risk in that blue category into being proficient. And again, here, the you know, the bar has changed, um so they're moving along quite nicely. And then Lorraine's fourth grade. And again, you can see a nice increase in the number of students who are proficient in Lorraine's fourth grade, a nice decrease, particularly in the areas of students who need intervention or urgent intervention. So you can imagine that the blue students in the fall have moved to green, the yellow have moved over to blue um and the red into the yellow. So sometimes it looks like um all of the categories are shrinking because they're all moving over um one level at a time. So I'm I'm extremely pleased with where we've gotten in the first half of the year and knowing that we have the whole second half of the year to go. And that and the compounding effect of doing these things year over year. So students who are meeting with success in kindergarten, who leave kindergarten this year at a D, that will be a really important uh number to watch because if they go into first grade at a D, that's so much easier than for those teachers to take them through the um and the upper levels. So I'm extremely pleased with um with all of all of the data that's coming out of all the new schools. Our teachers and students really doing an amazing job. I do have two more data slides, but they belong to the high school. So if there are any questions about these slides first, we're happy to take them.
Uh Dr. Meyer, what uh what's going on in the classroom to result in these changes?
Well, there's there's a number of really important things. You know, first, we have a lot of really high-quality instruction and the teachers have, I think, have been working incredibly hard for many, many years, but prior to last year, they were basically working with photocopies rather than real books. And the the school board made a significant investment in the Fonda-Seninell classroom materials and so now they have tons of books to choose from. They have a lot of guidance in the form of cards that are that go along with each book written by Fonda-Seninell. And so they're doing uh independent reading, they're doing shared reading, um they're doing interactive read-alouds, they're doing guided reading and they have, for the first time, really a a tremendous array of materials and support in the form of those lesson plan cards. They also have the support of our literacy coordinator, Claire McCray, who goes around in models lessons, works with teachers. Um and she's been an amazing help and support. And then our students this year are benefiting from a response intervention model and an increase in the number of reading specialists and ESL teachers. In the past, the district uh used reading aids to work with our most struggling students. Now we're able to use teachers who are not only classroom teachers, but are in fact trained reading specialists. And so having that level of expertise and the really small student-to-teacher ratio, um I think all of those factors combined, and that was that was the plan, that was the design of the plan, um was to be able to make aggressive strides in reading, to build that systems model so that, again, each subsequent year, you know, the fourth graders next year will come up higher than this year's third graders and as you build on that over time, um I think we will get to that hundred percent goal.
So we're seeing some of the things that we just heard about in seventh grade.
Yeah, yeah, it's yeah, it's really great. The amazing thing about reading is in the past, you know, schools everywhere spend so much time on worksheets and, you know, memorizing what color coat was so-and-so wearing and really made reading a chore for students and not having good materials really makes reading a chore for the adults. And so again, the board's investment in in the high-quality materials, the additional reading specialists, I think um you can already see in just basically twelve weeks, um the extent to which that's really paying off for the kids.
Great, thank you. One other question. Um and what about the kids who are still in the red and yellow? What what kinds of initiatives would be there?
That's a great question. So what happens is that we have the beginning of the year data collection where all the students took the STAR early literacy or reading, depending on their grade level. And then based on that, the students who are in the yellow, like yellow or the red, who need intervention or urgent intervention, uh were then given a benchmark assessment by a reading specialist to confirm that in fact their STAR data was accurate. I always like to use comparison. STAR data is like going to the doctor and getting your pulse ox and your blood pressure and then a VAS is more like you get a CT scan, like what what's really going on. So the so the reading specialists did that assessment and then they work in these groups uh for the urgent intervention kids. They're one to four with the reading specialist. So it's a lot of small personalized attention in a very um intense and supportive intervention program called Level Literacy Intervention. And so we do that for twelve weeks and then right now we're actually in pause at all of the elementary schools while we collect data again. So first they took the STAR. Reading specialists are now giving the benchmark assessment again and then in a week or so, we'll start up with new groups. Kids will be switched, you know, keep kids who have now made progress and they don't need as much support will move out, et cetera, and we'll we'll start that over again for the next twelve weeks and we'll we'll wrap up in mid-May.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Dr. Meyer, so this program is new, correct? This is the first year we're using it. So being, I don't want to call it a pilot, but since this is year one, what's the district's plan as far as professional development goes? So we've gotten through, you know, and I know we're only halfway through, but you know, say we get through year one, what what do we do to kind of break it apart, see what worked, what didn't work, what we need to improve on? How does that work for the employee?
Well, Fonda-Seninell is really an interesting program and a really different approach than uh traditional and like anthologies, for instance, or other programs where you go page by page through a teacher's manual. And so it really relies very much on the teachers looking at the students in front of them and then making decisions. So they can the the, for instance, many lesson books have like two hundred and thirty lessons. We have a hundred and eighty days of school. So teachers are having to make choices. So one of the big things that is happening in the course of this year is teachers are learning in real time which lessons work for which kinds of student needs. And I'm sure they're they're keeping good notes of that so that next year, there's not as much guessing in terms of which lessons accomplish which goals with their students. The professional development is really designed um to be job embedded. So having Claire McCray go in and model lessons with teachers, she's doing that all year round. You go in and take a group of kids and teach them the guided reading while the teacher watches. She's doing that all year round. So the the focus is really, you know, we had a couple of big days on how to do the VAS and so forth, but the focus is that constant job embedded all year, every year, um because you always have different readers, you always have things that are changing and it is really a complex program. So it's unusual in that it is, you know, Claire's purpose in being here is that year-round PD.
Dr. Meyer, the the data that you presented, does it include students who have IEPs and ESL students?
It includes students who have IEPs and ESL students with the exception of students who are unable to take a test like STAR reading or unable to participate um in response to intervention uh like an MDS student, you know, something along those lines. For the most part, students with IEPs are included in the tiers to some extent. I would say most of them are. Uh and same with ESL students. We include ESL students, actually, we tend to like to include ESL students at the tier one level, which is the junior grade books or inquiry level because it's about language exposure and conversation. A lot of kids just catch on. They don't actually have specific reading needs per se. They just need to get a a grip on the language and then their core instruction in the classroom. If we find an ESL student is making good progress with that methodology, LLI has really good research that supports ESL learners. And with the hiring of of additional ESL teachers, and now we have an ESL teacher at each of the elementary buildings, we're actually assigning a tier three group, a one to four ratio with an ESL's teacher and targeting ESL students into that group. So the ESL teacher has um that skill set with with English language learning and some of them are are dual-certified as reading specialists uh as well as ESL or as specialized teachers. And that's that's been a really tremendous addition.
How assuming you can't really give the STAR test in students' native language?
Uh we can give the STAR test in Spanish, which can be really nice for um school psychologists to determine whether that student can read in their native language and has the skill sets as long as it's Spanish, but that's the only other language that the the test is offered in.
Also, just a final question. Um how is how is this progress, you know, student progress reported? I mean, is it is this part of the student report card? Is this a separate communication? How how do families get information about this uh this kind of data change?
So um we ask the teachers to use the one of the STAR reports at conferences and to show the data to parents to explain where their children have strengths and where they have areas to improve and then to talk specifically about what they're doing with their child to move them along um that trajectory. And in the case of students who are receiving interventions with specialists, we've included those specialists in on the conferences as well. So we'll do the same thing um in spring to make sure that parents can see the alignment between how their child is doing and then what actions the teachers are taking in the classroom.
And is and is um is the student data, is it archived in some manner for the parent? Are they able to access it historically to kind of?
Um so the the parents are actually given a paper copy, you know, at each report cards or certainly they can they can hold on to those. Um if a parent, you know, wanted to look archivally at something, we could produce a report like that, but we don't do it as a matter of um normal business.
Dr. Meyer, are students allowed to bring books home, other than library books?
Do you mean like the books that they're using in the in their Fonda-Seninell? They're not allowed to use the Fonda-Seninell, bring the Fonda-Seninell classroom books home? With the exception of in the leveled literacy, uh part of that program is there are black and white versions of the book and students do bring them home in a backpack every night. That's part of the program is for them to do that. And then if teachers have other, you know, classroom lending libraries that they allow students to bring books home, um they can bring those. But the the books that are either guided reading or shared reading, they're they're part of the classroom and and they stay in the classroom.
Is the district still encouraging at the elementary level the use of like reading eggs in Epic?
Yes, uh reading eggs in particular is still being encouraged. It's, you know, especially at K one. It can be a really nice way for students to get into reading and because it's device agnostic, they can do it on their parents', you know, iPhone, et cetera. So we really do encourage that there. Epic um is encouraged more through the libraries, that sort of thing. It's not part of the the core instructional program. And then we also um have iPad iPads that are set up with a program called BookFlix where the books are um like classic books are animated and you can listen to the readers that kids can use in station reading um so they can hear more reading. It's a lot of sense. That's a really important part of students' reading. Uh there are no other questions on those. Then uh the next two slides are about the high school. So I'm sorry, I should say nineteen, nineteen, excuse me, eighteen, nineteen, not nineteen, nineteen, my apologies. So the graduation rate uh from eighteen, nineteen is what's reported in U S News, will report for twenty, twenty-one. And that was eighty-nine percent of Exeter students were graduating. And again, um as a board, uh along with me, we decided that setting a hundred percent graduation goal was important. Having a student go through Exeter for thirteen years and then leave with nothing is Having a student go through Exeter for 13 years and then leave with nothing is, is not what any of us want. And eighty-nine percent meant that one out of every 10 Exeter students was not graduating. I, I think that's just a very alarming number of students to be at that point in eighteen, nineteen. So again, we've set our goal at a hundred percent. We know that that's a multi-year process. Part of looking at that was looking at where were other school districts in the county, again, in eighteen, nineteen, reported in 2021. They have quite a lag at U S News. That ranked Exeter as fifteenth out of eighteen in the county in terms of our graduation rate. And again, I don't think that's where any of us expect Exeter to be in terms of countywide rankings. So last year, we made a, a real push towards a hundred percent reading goal. Mr. Campbell, his team of guidance counselors, all the teachers in the building, they really worked tremendously hard in a triage type situation to improve the graduation rate. And now the next presentation will be Mr. Campbell talking about the soaring eagle. We've learned a lot of lessons about what we had to do to triage kids last year that we can build into the system. And so positions like the intervention position that Mr. Esselman took are, is really important. Positions like the academic support person are really important. Identifying kids at risk early in their career at the high school instead of at the eleventh hour is really critical to continuing to improve that. But all of that said, with their amazing effort last year, the high school, and this won't show up in U S News for quite a while, had a graduation rate of ninety-six percent, which is a tremendous improvement in one year's time during a pandemic. Assuming that everybody else's data stayed the same as eighteen, nineteen, and Exeter had come in with this, with this level back in eighteen, nineteen, we would have ranked first in the county. So it, it was a huge lift on part of the high school team. And I, I think they've really done an excellent job of assessing the lessons that they've learned for the triage and how they can build a system that's much stronger.
Got a question. What's the profile of the student who doesn't graduate? Is there sort of a whole profile?
I think it, I think there are a lot of risk factors. I don't know that there's a specific profile. A lot of times we see students who have had a lot of transience, students who have difficulty in home lives, students who have had an unsuccessful experience with school. I'm sure Mr. Campbell could speak to a little more detail in terms of what the, what it looked like in terms of their, their students who struggled last year. Sometimes students can have mental health issues. Sometimes they can just be disengaged with school, disconnected, not feel like they have adult connections. So it's hard to say that there is a profile per se, but there are a lot of red flags. Anything from their scores coming out of eighth grade into ninth grade, their attendance, you know, just the amount of time they have disciplinary fractions, those sorts of things. So the team is getting good at, at looking for those red flag patterns and then assigning that academic support person to those kids to case manage them and, and, and take the kids that are most at risk. And then continually assess based on credit acquisition, course failures, et cetera, as they move through.
Dr. Meyer, following up on Mike's question. If we don't have a profile, have we looked at the relationship between student who isn't graduating and what, what's going on in the home? I don't mean just poverty or just transience or frequent job changes or no jobs. But what, what kind of support those kids are getting or not getting at home? Has anyone studied that either here at the district or ECIU or at major universities?
Yes, I think, I think you're, you're absolutely right. And that definitely impacts students at all grade levels. The amount of support they have at home, their ability, for instance, if they have to watch all their siblings. You know, there's a lot of, if they have to work to support, you know, there's a lot of things that can get challenging for students outside of the school day. So we have, through Estor grant funds, started to add in after-school tutoring for students so that, you know, if they don't have a parent who can help them and they do need more academic help, then beyond the, the school day, we can do that. And, you know, in our academic support position, we look to make connections with outside agencies and other things that may be able to support the family in a way that the student can be more successful. You know, another thing that we did last year, and, and really it's just starting to get up and running now, is add the internships. So, you know, student has their eye on a career that can be extremely engaging and a motivator for them to come to school. And then a very productive use of their diploma to go right into the world of work or to study a career that they might be interested in before they commit to the expense of a four-year degree in it and determine whether or not they're, they're really interested. So there are a number of initiatives, but I think, again, you know, the high school has a really nice complement of guidance counselors, special education teachers, you know, this academic support position to, to look at the unique factors that are contributing to, to a student's difficulty. Sometimes students or parents, you know, that's the real challenge. If you have a baby at home. So it, it is highly variable, but I think they do a really nice job. And, and part of the goal, again, has been to have enough support personnel that they can actually take the time to look into the needs of the student. Mr. Campbell, I don't know if you want to come up or Mrs. Harris, if you have anything you want to add? Because a lot of the supports come from Mrs. Harris's department in terms of what we've, we've done in that line.
I'll, I'll, I'll start. Actually, I want to just touch on Mr. Chapin and Mr. Fisher's questions. I, I think the idea of the profile is very, very difficult to nail down. And one of the things that's impressed me the most in working through this over the last year is how dialed in our counselors in particular, but also many of the teachers are with the students who are at risk and understanding those individual stories. Because at that level, the difference between that and a hundred percent are incredibly personal individual stories that in many cases we've seen coming and have worked tremendously hard and just wait there. So we know those kids, we know those families, and we have made all kinds of efforts to try to put those supports there, close that gap. And we'll continue to do so. And that's one of the things that I, I really want to express appreciation for is that support that's gone to several of those positions that have become really critical if we look forward. Dr. Meyer mentions Strassman and his intervention teacher. I mean, dozens of cases that he is managing at any given time, some of whom are like daily interventions he's working with that are actually scheduled with him. The supervisor, clinical supervisor that supports and partner. So Melissa Devlin and Strassman are really working closely so that she's helping overcome some of the structural barriers. And the internship, I think, has blossomed tremendously. I just went to meet with Mr. Ricketts today. It is incredibly neat to see how much he has thrown his ambition at that. And the number of opportunities that provides for the kids. We're expanding that into junior year and we're adding a summer opportunity. So that provides additional flexibility for students to explore some of those post-secondary goals and orient more of their classes toward their post-secondary goals. So I appreciate the support of all those professionals.
And now I will just take a moment to include Mr. Campbell in those supports because he didn't mention himself. And the high school team is a team and coordinates so well under his leadership. So just wanted to remind you that you forgot yourself in that little speech that you just gave. But Dr. Meyer often talks about systems and triage. And she has to remind me of that quite frequently when our people services team gets a little overwhelmed with some of the things that we're tackling right now, you know, in the midst of the pandemic and, and coming post-pandemic. But last year admittedly was a lot of triage, I would say, Mr. Campbell, in terms of us working with students to figure out what all of those barriers were that were preventing them from successfully graduating. But working through that triage, we've discovered some systems and are continuing to build those systems so that it's less triage and more of a systems approach moving forward. So that we're more proactive instead of reactive in terms of figuring out what students need to be successful.
Mr. Campbell, I wonder if you could talk for a minute? I know that you guys have an open student support coordinator that we're, we just talked about at the last meeting. And I'm sure that's going to help. You talk a lot, you guys talk a lot about triage and, and how we identify these kids and creating a, a profile to identify those kids. And when we think of graduation, we think of twelfth grade. I wonder if you could talk a little bit about how you're identifying those at-risk kids before they're in twelfth grade? I'm sure a lot of your time in the last twelve, eighteen months has been some of that of the upper-class students. But I would assume as this program continues to unravel, that you're going to be able to identify those kids at a much younger age and, and that work, that triage work will happen at a much different level.
Yeah, that's exactly what our next steps are. Now that we have taken some of those lessons from last year, really started to take this support that we have and have the Strassman, Mrs. Devlin, working with students, not in twelfth grade as much, but in ninth through twelfth and trying to build that foundation. It, it's going to take a while for us to really get dialed in exactly what those, how that system should be. But I do think that we have a lot of the markers that we're looking for. I mean, academics, attendance, and behavior, three things that we're constantly looking at for all students. And they become the, those warning flags. And they come in various combinations and various forms. But those are the things that we're constantly watching as we see, to look for students who need to be looked at more closely. It is pretty remarkable that when you take those and then apply that personal relationship that you have with those kids who hit that mark, that you really start to understand what's the why behind those individual kids. I remember one conversation with one counselor, very beginning of last year. And she said, this, this kid, this kid is the one I'm worried about right now. She was looking a hundred eighty days out. She knew it, she knew it from the previous three years. And as strong as our performance was last year, we had to really scoop him up in the summer after graduation. So although he's counted in our graduates for last year, it took more than the year to get him across that bar. And I think it's a sign that beyond those quantitative markers, we also have those relational understandings of those individuals at that highest level.
Okay, Tom, go right ahead.
All right, thank you. We could, Mark, you could present the summary of changes for the soaring eagle. All right, so we have some minor changes that are always in. Just taking a look at some points of clarity, directory names, type of regrettable errors. But the ones of note are the ones in the next section. The first of those has to do with our AP course weight. While we believe that our students are really capable of achieving threes and higher on the AP exam, we also don't want to discourage any students in attempts to take that AP test. So we're removing that requirement for three or higher for the weight. And students who take the test will be awarded a weight of one point oh, one point one oh, regardless of their score. The next section has to do with some changes, course names and offerings. The first of those is in special ed. The social studies courses there, the transitions one and two have existed. And there's a lot of overlap in those and due to some scheduling constraints, we've taken a step back to look at those. And we're going to combine those courses into a multi-year program that is much more aligned.
Excuse, excuse me, Mr. Campbell, I wonder if we could get the, the slide?
Sure.
Sorry, did you do it?
No, thank you.
Mr. Campbell, while we wait here, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
In, in regards to the AP exam, with the, with the one point ten weighting, that, that eliminates the, the weighting that was tied to the scores of the students that collected something in the AP. I believe the weighting was only tied to if you got a pre or better.
Right.
So the, the weighting is one point ten if you take the exam. Can you explain why we are, why we increased the rating, whether or not you take the exam or not for an AP?
Yeah, because the, the AP course is really oriented toward, and from the college board in terms of their, putting their, their seal on that, their, their approval of those curricula, it is really oriented toward that test and preparing students for that test so that they have that, I'll call it currency, that they can take to colleges across the nation that's recognized for being a standard measure of what that student learned in that course. So we do think that that preparation for that is what we want students to do. And they're in a course that's designed for it. They've got instructions to prepare them for it. And we really want students to take advantage of that opportunity so that they have that with them when they go off and apply to colleges and roll and take a maximum, get the maximum benefit from many schools for the credit that they can carry with them because of that test score.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let you carry it. All right, thank you. So to the, the special ed, we are taking those transitions one and two classes and restructuring those into a multi-year course that is going to allow more students in those and better articulate with each other and also with the other social studies classes in regular education. In social studies, we are adding courses and changing the sequence of ninth to tenth grade over the next two years. So next year, we will be adding AP Human Geography and Global Studies. And that will be the ninth grade social studies course. Then the current ninth graders, or the, the current, uh, next year's ninth graders then will take American Culture in tenth grade. So after next year, we'll have AP Human Geography and Global Studies in ninth. And then American History will be tenth grade. Eleventh grade will continue to be the civics class for all juniors. And then the twelfth grade will be variety of collectives, everything from military history, world history, economics, psychology. The addition of the AP Human Geography and Global Studies in ninth grade is an opportunity for kids to be exposed to AP curricula as well as see their capabilities with that. AP Human Geography is an excellent choice for an introduction. It's often viewed as a gateway to AP programming and is commonly provided for ninth grade classes. In our world language program, we are phasing out Latin due to declining enrollment over several years. I'm very proud of our, our world language enrollment across the board. We've seen numbers that are stable and in some of the languages is actually increasing over several years. And I think the changes that we made in junior high are also going to contribute to that in longer term. Latin has not seen that same subscription. So we will not offer Latin next year. We will continue to allow students who are in the program to continue their studies. Exeter, by the way, is not unique in that. We've been in a couple of schools that have dropped their Latin programs in recent years. I think at this point, there's four schools in the county that have Latin. In tech ed, Mr. Mark, if you can scroll to the next page, please. Uh, tech ed, there's one change to curriculum and then some name changes. The technical and computer drawing one and two are being merged. And that is largely a result of the skills in those courses being integrated into some of the other courses that we have already in the program. Our tech ed department does a nice job of keeping up with changes in technology and field. So what used to be a, a multi-year course really is something that is a lot more accessible to students now because technology has become a lot easier. Kids come in with more prior knowledge that allows them to accelerate their own study. So we're taking a two-year course, merging it into one, and then those same skills are being found in some of the other curricula. Down below there, some of the name changes for purposes of clarity are noted. I won't read those for you, but they're mostly condensing some of those names to make it simpler to understand. They typically, they are how we refer to those courses and they're shortened by a march. In the music department, we introduced some techniques classes last year as an effort to provide more individual instruction in instruments. We, what we found as we rolled that out is that because of scheduling and because of instruction, those classes often overlap. So what we're going to do is we're going to merge those and turn those into instrumental techniques and simply schedule those as a single course. In the internship program, now that it's managed by a full-time staff, we are moving that out of the business department and into its own course number sequence of its own. And we're integrating the educational apprentice. and we're integrating the educational apprenticeship course into the internship program to make that a little more rigorous and focus on some skilled internship. Questions?
I just have a couple. So on the AP tests, we're not going to do the penalties on the scores or career lower in terms of the grade, right?
Yes. Any student who takes the test will have that.
And if they get score a three or lower, will they still have the AP on their transcript?
Anybody who takes the test will have that, yes.
So you have to take the test, not just the course?
Students who take the course and take the test have, you get the weight. Students who are in that course, who are not pursuing dual enrollment, get a course where there is that overlap, you have their course designated as AP. Students who are pursuing dual enrollment will have their course designated through RAC, which is where their, their credit comes from.
But anybody who takes either the course and then the test?
Yes.
Will have the AP noted on their transcript?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, even if they take the course as AP and don't take the test, it will still be noted as AP.
What percentage of our kids who take the test, I'm sorry, what percentage of our kids who take the course take the test?
It's between 75 and 80% in recent years.
Is there a particular reason why somebody wouldn't take? I mean, I wasn't a test student, so I would probably avoid anybody. But is there a particular reason why somebody wouldn't? Is it that they don't do well in tests, that they're not, you know, properly prepared? Because I, I think that, you know, some people may not have the wherewithal to do the prep, whether it's SAT or AP or whatever, is that better?
I don't think preparation is, is, because students are in the course, and that the course is really designed to prepare them for that. I think the, the reasons are going to vary. Not to study that, but anecdotally, some students, they don't want to. Some students think that they don't need the support. My opinion, if you were going to put that level of work into studying something for that long and prepared to do it, I'd love to see them take the test and if they really improve themselves, or they committed themselves to do it for a year.
And how many AP classes have dual enrollment?
Seven.
And how many AP classes do we have?
We have, fluctuates a little bit, 17.
So we don't have dual enrollment in the other 10 because it's not offered by RAC or it's not, you know, there are a variety of reasons, sometimes it's stats, sometimes it's not, instructor doesn't qualify. But by and large, it's, well, it's, it's one of those two reasons. So is there any value in, I mean, I'm sure there's a cost associated with it, but is there any value in getting instructors up to speed to make that dual enrollment possibility for the other 10 courses?
I think with the AP being available for them, that really is going to be the more affordable, more highly recognized for college credential. So I think that's, that's really what we have in place.
Well, what I'm saying is somebody would take dual enrollment because they want the credits so that they could perhaps add something else onto their college schedule or, you know, be sort of a little bit more advanced or a little bit hip, right? I mean, plus it would be a little cheaper, three credits from RAC would be cheaper than three credits from, so.
Mr. Trina, I, you know, I think that-
Maybe I'm confusing it?
No, 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 you're definitely not confusing it. I think having dual enrollment programs, for instance, we've, you know, been tossing the idea around of partnering with a university for students who want to become teachers and trying to knock out a, a large number of their course credits that way. So I think there's a lot of opportunities with dual enrollment. I think dual enrollment is, is potentially problematic when it comes to something like AP where you can take the test and get the college credit, and, but then we have this other way where you don't have to. So I think offering RAC or other typical dual enrollments around AP not duplicative of AP is, is probably the best strategy. So I think the more different ways and different courses we can get kids accelerated into the college program, I think that's a benefit. I, I just think targeting courses that aren't necessarily AP since they have a mechanism is probably a better direction to focus on scaling up our teachers to offer that dual enrollment.
I'm not in education, I guess. Okay, well, thank you. I, I appreciate that you took, you know, input from people in the community around the dress. Waited, I'm, I'm pleased to see that the transcript is back, that AP's back on the transcript.
It was never, it was never offered transcript, Mr. Trina.
Even if you failed, even if you got a three or a-
Yes, it was all, AP was, if you signed up for AP regardless, if you got a one, two, three, zero, it was always there. That was, that was brought up, but that wasn't correct. Yep.
And then, just, could you just generally explain the difference between honors and AP? Just because I think, I mean, it appears, it appears that AP is more rigorous, but curious, do you have an explanation of that?
I, I certainly do that, but I, I would defer to Mr. Campbell. He knows more about his high school courses in terms of an honors curriculum. I would just start by saying the AP is a specific curriculum put out by the college board, and it's literally courses that are teach to the test, right? It is completely designed for you to take that test and be successful and earn college credit, whereas in honors is a more rigorous version of our own curricula, and AP is a, is a completely different curriculum. It's owned by the college board. I don't know if you've more or less-
I think that's, that's a good summary. I think what makes AP different than honors is that you know what the AP curriculum is in Exeter and in Daniel Boone and in Pittsburgh because they all are oriented toward that same exam, and they have all, all had their curricula from the college board. Honors has a lot more variations, a lot more locally controlled. You can make some guesses about what an honors econ curriculum would be, but you know what an AP curriculum would be, no matter what school you go to. Both are a more rigorous version of a standard course. And given the depth and quality of the materials the college board has been putting out and the success, we've seen a lot of students in those programs over the years, I think that we can say that the difference between honors and AP is closing in terms of how, how well kids have been doing in AP courses.
So one of the things I think I read last week, that, I mean, AP or the college board shifting their test around or going electronic or something like that. Have we seen, as a number of colleges, I think there's like 1,800 now or over 1,800 are, we call test optional now, have we seen kids backing away from some of the AP tests or some of those things? I mean, I don't think colleges, I don't think colleges are staying test optional forever. I think they're sort of in a test period to see the quality of the student, how they select somebody to, to come into the college. I was just curious if that has enhanced or increased participation in those more rigorous offerings?
Well, I think it's really important to differentiate what, or to identify what test optional means. Test optional is really referring to SAT and AP, and ACT. So they, although the college board does oversee both SAT and AP programs, the AP program is a wholly separate part of that admissions process. And-
Well, so, and I'll, thank you for educating me. I will ask my question a different way. Because there is, because colleges may not put as much emphasis on the SAT, do we see kids deciding, or go taking SAT? Are we still at about that level where we were prior?
I think, you know, last year was really the year that they started to move away from it because of the pandemic and in mass, you know, like, so it's, I think it's hard to, like, have enough data points to say if we see a consistent change in behavior over that period of time. I, I would think if colleges continue to have test optional SATs, then students will look at things on their transcripts as, to be more of differentiators because that won't be, right? And so taking AP classes and, and taking the test, you know, you'll need other ways to differentiate yourself as a, a strong academic student if you can't rely on, you know, I'm going to get an amazing score on my SAT if colleges are just like, we're not, we're not that interested. You know what I mean? So I think, well, I think just to your point, you know, it'll take a couple of years to kind of level out what colleges are really doing. And the other thing is colleges are really desperate for enrollment. You know, I think college or enrollment across the country went down. I think this, this statistic I heard, don't quote me, but I think it was like a million, a million fewer students enrolled in college this year than prior to the pandemic. So I think colleges are doing a lot of thinking about how they draw and retain students coming in an economic crisis.
And I'll be curious to see how colleges assess that, you know, four, four years, six years down the line. And I, and I, I talk about colleges, but I don't, I don't believe that is the only option for somebody who cares about their life. So I think plenty of careers where you can get by a two-year degree or some sort of technical training or whatever, this just happens to be sort of what we were talking about, sort of, so, thank you very much.
Mr. Campbell, one more AP question. My understanding is that the AP exams all happen at the end of the school year, is that correct?
That's correct.
Does Exeter do anything to provide any extracurricular prep program for our students that are taking the AP course in the first half of the year and then have a, quite a substantial gap between when they finish that course and when they take the test?
Yes, our, our AP teachers are very, very aware of that, and all of them have various forms of review sessions that they run, online or sometimes hard copy, but there's, there's a number of online review sites that they've relied on and continue to look at. Honestly, the college board has done a fantastic job of deepening out this AP classroom, and that's gotten very favorable reviews from our teachers and as a source for not only instruction, but also review after the course.
Do you see the AP board in the future? Have you heard anything that they may start considering allowing testing for those districts that only do half your programs for their APs?
You know what, that's been a, a point of conversation among the districts in the county that run on a semester schedule. That has been something that we have asked for years. I have not heard of the college board pursuing that change. So, but it's something that we've been watching for, and nothing.
Thank you.
This, oh, sorry.
Regarding phasing out Latin, are there options for that student that is adamant they want to take Latin that we can provide them or guide them to?
So to, just to make sure that it's clear, students who are currently in Latin I will have Latin II as a choice next year and hence III, III and IV as well. Your question about whether a student would want to start their study of Latin, that's something that I want to follow up with Mr. Wilczek to see what's out there in terms of, on our online resources. In terms of having a brick and mortar in person, I, I don't see that as being a responsible choice, given the numbers that we've seen with the program in recent years.
Mr. Campbell, just to kind of also follow up, I, I think it's good that the, the weighting is no more tied to the, the exam results. The, the other area of criticism that I know we've received has to do with the dual enrollment of the AP and the fact that the AP delineation gets removed from that, and I believe you said, instead of AP, it's labeled a RAC. Do you know why that is, or the, the reasoning behind it? I think there was some questions as to the student is still taking the AP class, and there was some contention around why are they losing the AP designation?
Oh, they're, they're pursuing their credit from RAC, so that was, that was the rationale behind that. So the, the best way for, and I think that that designation can be powerful, and that's where students, we really want students to be taking that test so that they have that score with them and carry that to colleges when they are applying and anything. But RAC is recognized in some places too as a, as a source for the credit that students can take to certain colleges.
Thank you.
One, I have another question, Mr. Campbell. The, Dr. Minor talked about the graduation rate. Going back to the US News and Wall Street Board rankings, graduation is a, is 10% of the total ranking. The highest percentage is something called college readiness. That's 30%, and that's tied directly to AP courses. I, I won't go through all the numbers, but Exeter is about, about where we were in total rankings with the college readiness. The changes that you're making, let me ask it a different way. Is one of your, is one of our goals as a district to increase that ranking, just as your goals are to increase graduation rate, moving the path? Where does the college readiness stand in our goal setting?
It's one of the reasons that we really are emphasizing students following through it in their entirety with our AP curriculum, taking that exam to demonstrate their mastery of what they've studied. It's also part of what we want to achieve with getting students exposed to and understand their capabilities with AP coursework, with the AP Human Geography. We know that students are capable of this, and we know our teachers are perfectly skilled at teaching it. So we need to shift that understanding, that, and that, the goal on the part of kids and their, their awareness of their abilities as early as we can. So yes, that is part of what our goal of our, with those changes.
Thank you. Other questions? Or Dr. Minor? Okay, thanks, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Just as a, a point of clarification, that would be an item to move the Soren Eagle on to the voting meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. That was actually going to be one of my questions, too. And the other item that we would move is item D on tonight's agenda, the conference request. So we will have a request that we would also on the agenda for the next voting. And that's the M and A committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Fiddler. Finance, facilities, and audit committee, Mr. Mel?
Yes, item A is the Contract for Statewide Tax Recovery LLC. This was the, the business that had given us a presentation back at the January Committee of the opening day. We decided to table that just to get some more information on it. Mr. Fieck had made some contacts with some references, which is attached to that agenda item. And this, just to refresh everyone, this is the company that would collect the delinquent per capita taxes, the existing company that we had been using with Berkhimer, so we'd be switching over to statewide. Is there any other discussion on this? So I think we'll be moving that one to the voting agenda. Item B, per capita tax exonerations. Again, this just follows through with the approved contract of statewide. We will be pursuing the collection of the remaining 2020 per capita tax delinquent bills, and it would be going to statewide tax recovery for Volker. Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mel?
Yes?
So anything that we're currently working with, with Berkhimer, would that then be transferred over, or would we finish our work with them and just moving forward, work would go to statewide?
For that, Mr. Fieck for that answer?
It's just going to your role. So they'll continue to work with the collection that they're doing as of right now? Okay, thank you.
Item B, we'll want to move that one to the voting agenda as well. Okay, item C, firefighter tax credit. We do have a presentation to, tonight by Mr. Christopher Jordan. This particular topic, I, I think the prior board is familiar with this, this had come up a few times last year in discussions, and one of the board members had reached out to Mr. Hemberger and myself being on the finance committee and asked if they would be able to, to come here and just reintroduce the discussion. So let Mr. Jordan take it all here with the presentation. So let Mr. Jordan take it off here with the presentation.
My name's Chris Jordan, I'm deputy fire chief with the Exeter Township Volunteer Fire Department. Thank you for allowing us to present this evening. The Exeter Township Volunteer Fire Department provides fire protection and many other community services to the residents of Exeter Township School District. Like many other local volunteer organizations, the Exeter Township Volunteer Fire Department is faced with a major challenge in declining volunteerism within our community. As presented to the board in January 2021, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has passed legislature and housed Bill 1673 to help first responders across the entire Commonwealth. Bill 1673 is aimed to advance first responder programs across all of Pennsylvania. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania recog- can we wait on that? I'm sorry. Is it just my intro? Oh, in the room, okay, I didn't realize he was going through the presentation. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania recognizes this volunteer dilemma and has offered an aggressive tax credit program for fire departments. The program offers up to a 100% tax credit on school taxes for active volunteers. To date, several Pennsylvania school districts have seamlessly, seamlessly implemented this tax credit program. We are here this evening asking the Exeter Township School Board to continue to be leaders in the community by implementing a volunteer firefighter tax credit program for the Exeter Township Volunteer Fire Department members. The tax credit expansion of House Bill 1673 will greatly enhance the Exeter Township Volunteer Fire Department's ability to not only retain current volunteers, but also recruit new volunteers to assist with firefighting and other support functions. And on the screen, we put together a brief presentation to lay out the details of the proposed program. I'm not sure if I'm telling, okay. So first of all, what we request is a 50% tax credit for all eligible members and we would cap that at $4,000 per member. Next. To be eligible for this requirement, you must live in Exeter Township or St. Lawrence Borough. You must obviously own a primary residence in Exeter Township or St. Lawrence Borough. You must be a member of the Exeter Township Volunteer Fire Department for at least one year prior to being eligible. You must be a member in good standing with the department. And listed below are some of the requirements in order to be an active member with the fire department. We have two different categories, we have firefighters slash fire police and what they must do. And then we also have support members that are people that help with financial records, tax audits, and also different fundraising and support efforts that we may have. As far as a cost analysis goes, in 2021, right now we have 21 eligible members. I will say that not all of those members will take advantage of the program for varying reasons. But right now we have 20 eligible members. If you go to the next section. So the estimated tax liability to the school district, we're estimating it will be between 40 and $60,000. And the way we came to that number, I, I did some of the math below. Based on the latest assessments, the average household assessment is $135,400 in Exeter Township. The average school tax bill, and Mr. Feick, you can correct me if I'm wrong, based on that assessment would be $4,630. That's based on the current millage at 34.1968. If we take 50% of that average, it'd be $2,315. And if we took all 20 eligible members times that amount, it'd be roughly $46,300 annually. To put it into perspective, it's about .05 to .075% of the school district's estimated $79 million annual budget. I hope those numbers are accurate. If you go to the next slide, some benefits to the program and goals of the program. Benefits are, what I stated earlier, to increase recruitment for the fire department, increases retention of our existing volunteer base, and it also attracts prospective firefighters to live in Exeter Township. Next section. The goals of the tax credit, the fire department would advertise the new program on social media, local newsletters and various other locations to help solicit new members. And our goal is to add five new active interior firefighters to serve our community. The Exeter Township Fire Department and Exeter Township School District have had a longstanding partnership. Go to the next section. There's many events that we participate in district-wide, fire prevention in schools and in stations, homecoming parade and bonfire, senior parade when we have it, elementary school APT family fun days, we provide lighting for band practices when requested, and we escort championship sports teams when requested, which is happening a lot lately, which is good. I also wanted to state from Mr. Campbell's presentation that I had a conversation today with Mr. Ricketts from the high school. And we're also going to be working on implementing an internship program for the emergency services. So that was a very nice conversation this afternoon. So it's just another way where students can explore the opportunities in the emergency services. So hopefully that comes to fruition, just in the initial stages, but hopefully that happens. And last but not least, we just want to thank you for your support and together we can continue to make Exeter a safe and a great place to live. So at this time, I'd like to field any questions, if there are any, or comments.
Mr. Jordan, I have, I have a question.
Sure.
The eligibility requirements that you laid out in the beginning of the, of the presentation, are those unique to the, to Exeter Township? Or is that part of the, the current legislation?
That is unique to Exeter Township. The way the legislation is written is that the individual municipality gives the latitude to the organization to determine what the requirements would be to have eligible members as part of the program.
So is, is that negotiable in any way? I mean, is that something that could flex a little bit based upon reference of a school district?
Of course. What we did for Exeter Township, in which we've already had this, we already had the ordinance in place with Exeter Township for their tax credit. We gave them a proposal, they had some questions on the proposal about the requirements, and we settled in on what those requirements will be. So it is a, it is an ongoing dialogue, the requirements have worked so far. It has gotten people to come out for our current tax program, so, but yes, it would be a dialogue between the school district and the fire department.
Mr. Jordan, you made a comment about varying reasons for why someone wouldn't take advantage of it, can you give a couple of those reasons?
Oh, I've had a few. One was they didn't want to disclose their tax records. Because in Exeter Township, you not only have to supply your real estate tax bill, but we also have an earned income tax credit. So you have to supply your W-2 and they did not want to disclose those, those records. For whatever reason, some people are very funny about their personal information. We do need to provide like a social security number, things of that nature, some people didn't want to disclose that information. I don't know why, I mean, I know why, but you know, we, we tell them that it's secure, we hope that the township and hopefully the school district can take good care of our records and that it wouldn't be disclosed. There are some people that still do not feel comfortable.
Of, of the amount of members that you have, you say 20 are eligible, how many of the members are homeowners as opposed to renters?
I would say all 20 of those members are homeowners.
Right, right, but of all of your firefighters?
I would estimate probably another 20 that either are renters or live with a, a parent, where they wouldn't be the primary homeowner, so they won't be eligible. And then the rest of our members either live outside of Exeter Township at St. Lawrence Borough or they're part of our staffing program, so they live further away and come in to help us provide services.
And I apologize if you've already said this, but you said the township is offering this already?
Correct.
How much, is it also 50% tax credit?
Yes.
With a cap of 4,000?
A full disclosure.
Sure.
So we started, I, I forward the ordinance to Mr. Mel, I apologize, I got it to him late. But the ordinance is in place through Exeter Township. The ordinance, when it was initially proposed, was at 15% because that was the max that they could go. Once the legislature changed that they could go to 100%, they moved that last February to 50%. So now the, the tax ordinance is at 50%. And what was your other question?
With the $4,000 cap, the same?
There's no cap.
There's no cap.
But quite frankly, on the municipal tax bill, it's much lower. And it's, it's, you're never going to hit that cap on the municipal tax bill unless something astronomical happens, happens with your tax. There is also in that ordinance an, an earned income tax credit through the township.
And what, what other school districts are, are doing this in Berks County?
None in Berks County.
None in Berks County, okay.
There's two in Pennsylvania, Cambria Heights School District and Clayesburg School District. I think they're on the west side of the state, central, western side of the state.
They are.
There, there's some others that are looking into it more locally. We attended a seminar at Albright College in regards to recruitment and retention and some other fire service topics. And this was a big topic of discussion that a lot of the local fire departments, when I say local, southeastern Pennsylvania, not necessarily Berks County, are looking into, you know, implementing programs like this because they see the declining volunteer.
I was just gonna, Mr. Jordan, with the, as you mentioned, with the volunteer enrollment declining, when that happens, you, you would eventually see a need for full-time, paying for full-time firefighters, if that's where it's potentially. And the cost for one of those was mentioned to be $100,000?
Yeah, approximately, I mean, we estimate a full-time firefighter with benefits could be upwards of $100,000 per year in that position.
And, and the liability, if that would happen, the liability for that, the township would have to pay, is that correct?
Correct, yes, the township, the township would feel the burden of that.
Yes. Taxpayers in general would.
Correct, Exeter Township taxpayers would, you know, they would have to either increase the fire tax or some other things that they may have to do to figure out how to bring on those full-timers.
Thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Okay, so you talked about the two townships or the two school districts that do currently, and I think I read that they each give $200 per firefighter. Are you aware of their percentage or the amount that they get?
Yes.
Okay, is 200 correct?
The one, I know of the one for sure, I don't know of the other.
Okay, and you said the township is giving 50% of the amount.
Exeter Township, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
So, and I just have a question, so my house is assessed $100,000, Mike's is $300,000.
Right.
So he benefits a little more than I do, but I'm just saying. And, you know, I might put in more hours as a part, you know, of the fire. So I, I, to me, I think the percentage makes way a little differently based upon who puts in more service time. And I know as a volunteer, it is technically an unpaid position, but there is also incentive, correct?
For sure, yes.
Okay, so when you said they didn't want to disclose their earned income, is that part of the 1099 process of the incentive they get also to be firefighters?
No.
Like, is that not included?
That's not included.
And when you talk to administrative or firefighter EMS response, so administrative personnel, what are their requirements to qualify for this?
So the support personnel would need to keep a log of 200 hours in order to be eligible. You know, if you do the rough math, it's about four to five hours a week on average. It would take a pretty firm commitment to reach that. And currently, this past year, we had, I believe, three, I'm sorry, four members that qualified based on their support.
Okay, so that's 16 firefighter EMS.
16.
Or fire police.
Yeah, 16 fire EMS, fire police.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Jordan, you said there were 20 eligible.
Correct.
How many of those 20 are currently participating in the township program?
I would say, well, there are 20 eligible for this year, 2021. The last time we presented, there were only eight that took advantage of that program. So the different, we'll, we'll find out this year how many, I'm estimating it will be higher. We have more people eligible this year, which is good, that means more people are coming out. So I, I would estimate it possibly between 12 and 16 would take advantage of the program, that's just an estimate for this year.
So the, the 12 who are not participating now, what were their reasons? The reasons you cited, they didn't want to disclose their?
Varying reasons. I mean, I, I already said some of them, others were just, they just didn't turn in their paperwork, to be quite frank with you. There's a, there's a pretty stringent process, we have an application they have to fill out, they have to turn in the real estate tax bill that was paid, they have to turn in the W-2. This, as I'm sure some of the teachers in the room can attest to, some people just don't get it done.
Who, who would verify, one of your slides had all of the information.
And we can go back if we need to.
Yeah.
Are you looking for the, the, the estimated tax expenses?
No, the, the one that, that they have to prove that they're.
Yeah, one slide, yeah, right there.
Whose responsibility is it to verify all of that information?
Right now, it's the fire chief's responsibility, and when I say chiefs, it would be myself and the fire chief, you would sign off on it.
And Brian, would you be involved in this at all if we were to approve this? I mean, wouldn't we want to do a, our own independent verification of all of this information?
Yeah, we'd verify.
And how difficult, how much time of yours would that take?
Yeah, so can I? Can I say one thing? I, I forgot, with the township, again, part of the requirement is we need to send a notarized list of eligible members to the township. They've never asked for documentation supporting why they were eligible or not, but we have all that available if they would. We keep call logs, we keep hourly logs, things of that nature. You know, obviously, Mr. Feick could obviously be involved in the process, but in reality, it should be us providing him with the details of it.
Okay, also, you listed three, another slide, you listed three reasons increase recruits, increase, retention and attract prospective members. Do you have that information for Cambria and Clayesburg? In other words, how successful has this program been for their communities in increasing recruiting, increasing retention and attracting prospective members?
So I talked to the Clayesburg fire chief, who is also. So I talked to the Clayesburg Fire Chief, who is also, I think Clayesburg or Cambria, I can't remember, I'm sorry. It was one of them. And he stated that in the last year since they implemented the program, they have, don't quote me on this, I have the, I have the letter that he sent me. I believe it was eight new members and five of them are enrolled in the basic firefight program.
Okay, thank you.
He, he also underscored that with, he couldn't attribute that to the tax credit, but he just wanted us to apply to it with that.
Sure, thank you.
Did you see an increase with the township credit with the enrollment?
That's a great question. When we initially got the township tax credit, we advertised it, we had eight people email and apply almost within the first, I would say, the first week. Of those eight people, only two of them followed through with the process and only one of them has stayed with us the entire time through the process. The township tax credit is a very nice, it's very nice and it helps with recruitment. I believe last year, the total amount that was credited to the members overall was three, thirty-two hundred dollars.
So thirty-two hundred dollars was the tax credit to all members to apply individually or total?
Total. And I could get you the exact number on this.
No, that's fine, it's, it's a very small number compared to forty-six thousand.
Yeah, and that's, that's a, that's because of the mileage. The mileage of the township is one tenth of this school district. Mike, you got a question?
Chief, first of all, thank you for your volunteering in the community. I saw you running out of here as I was coming in, so.
Luckily it was nothing, man.
I appreciate your commitment and those, I see Mr. Miller behind you, and I appreciate the efforts that you guys make to support the community. Since this is a committee of the whole meeting and this is for discussion, please don't take this in any way. I want to have some dialogue amongst the board members here, but I just have a couple of questions. What is a member in good standing? What would you, how would you characterize that? Is that somebody who, you know, conforms to the policies or the?
So there's a few things. We're actually going through a process right now where a member needs to pay a five dollar per year dues. If they don't do that, they're considered, they're given to the personnel committee and they may not be active. It's basically our way to, how do I put this, purge our membership. If you're, if you're not interested in participating and you can't come out to the calls, then you're not going to be part of the active roster. The next step we would do is we would track their activity level. So we, we keep a monthly tally on how many calls people have. After that, we knock it down to how they respond to the severity of the call. For instance, I would have never ran out of this room tonight if it would have been a minor accident, okay? Don't take that the wrong way, I go to those. But this was reported to be an apartment on fire, so I, I left this evening to go. Luckily, it was nothing. But we look at who responds to which incidents. If we have a, if we have a medical call that may require two firefighters, we don't incentivize or we don't necessarily need twenty firefighters coming out for those calls. The next thing we do is we look at their activity levels in our meetings. We have basically twelve meetings a year. We require them to attend at least three of those meetings to be eligible to vote and be a member in good standing. We also look at our training sessions, they need to log a certain amount of hours. We look at community events. Now, the community events over the last couple of years have been a little bit down, mainly because people have either canceled or they couldn't have them. But there's, there's many other things we look at to answer your question. And our goal is to get every member to an active status and be that member in good standing with the program. That's the ultimate goal.
But it seems that there's a fairly well-developed program that you guys manage.
We try, I mean, I'll be totally candid with you, I've collected eight sets of gear from inactive members over the last month because they're not active and we need to get that gear back, make it productive for another member.
Okay. And, and this can also help to stabilize, even if it doesn't grow, even if it stabilizes that would sort of be a benefit as well.
Correct.
So are there any, I guess you sort of already talked about this around enhancing or retaining recruitment. I mean, are you confident that those, that marketing campaign for recruitment will yield new members? Are you looking for people across the spectrum? I, I'm going to ask for a metric on something else. What's a metric of a firefighter? What is, what is the average Exeter Township firefighter?
So I think, I think, you brought up a gay point, Mr. Japina, earlier. You said the goal of the program might only, might be to stabilize as well and maintain that number. That's where the retention comes in, to keep the members we currently have active. There's a lot of talent within this township that were firefighters, could be firefighters, already have the training. I'm hoping something like this plus other incentives we offer could bring them out and participate. There's, there's firefighters within this township that go to other municipalities to volunteer. We want them to stay in Exeter. There's firefighters that are looking at a house in Exeter and they say, you know what, I'm going to buy that house in Spring Township, and they're good firefighters. We want to entice them to come to Exeter. So we try to advertise our programs. Sometimes we get criticized for advertising our programs because we're very proactive when it comes to Berks County municipalities, when it comes to this type of stuff. Mr. Mel brought up about career firefighters. Spring Township and Wilson School District is career. They have a budget that's more than, I'm going to say it's more than double ours, I think it's actually triple ours as far as the firefighting goes. That's one thing we're trying to avoid. So the goal is to retain, but also recruit, and our hopes would be that these advertisements that we would do once approved would again help keep our people, bring people in that are already trained, but also bring people in to be trained.
I have a question for Mr. Fike. Has there been any, or I guess anybody, has there been any, or maybe Sharon, has there been any sort of, I, I can't say that has there been any. I know there has been some legal interpretation of this piece of legislation.
There hasn't been any actual decisions or lawsuit decisions. There, there was, is some concern about the, the uniformity of picking out a specific subgroup and allowing for tax for some sort of tax break. Now, you do have that riddled throughout the tax code, so it does exist for, for various constituents. We haven't, our office hasn't done a thorough look at, you know, the, the implications. It's just that there, there, there is a little bit of a concern that, that there's a lack of uniformity, but I, I can't tell you at this, right now, which way that would tend to fall.
So when you say lack of uniformity, do you mean it's sort of like if you've done it for this group, you might have to do it for that group? Or you're setting a precedent in some respects?
Yes. And, and as I said, there are already carve-outs for various groups, so I'm not saying it can't be done, but we haven't looked into it.
Okay, so I'm, nope, go ahead. By no means am I a lawyer, never claimed, trust me. But I know that in nineteen seventy-seven, Pennsylvania set up the LERTA for tax evasion for different groups, which you guys have implemented in the past. I will offer this, the Cambria Heights Solicitor of that school district has offered to answer any questions that the board may have or anybody, Mr. Fike or the Solicitor. And that individual was actually the past president of the Pennsylvania School Board Solicitor Association, if I got that right. So that person claims to be very well-versed in some of these situations, so if there are questions, that may be something to utilize. I can get that contact information to the board.
Have some discussion with the board, because I, I sort of have five options here that I think we should discuss. I think that we could be all over, all over the place. So, so one is do nothing, okay? I don't personally consider that an option that we would want to do. And I'm just throwing this out for debate, okay? I do know that we do have a volunteer rate that we give people in the school district who volunteer, how is it, five hundred dollars a year?
It's up to five ninety-nine, because anything here is six, nine, we're grabbing ten ninety-nine.
So, so.
I'm not sure that the township's ten ninety-nine.
So you, you could.
But no matter what, if it's a credit or whatever, it's well.
So you could make the case that just what we've seen up here, they have volunteered on behalf of the school district to do a variety of events and education. So, so that would be five ninety-nine, you know, if we were to look at all the firefighters, you know, at, at that rate. The other one is to do a pass-through as part of the budget. So, you know, you can go with fifty percent, how are you going to pay for this? You just pass that through as some sort of a part of our, you know, budget for next year. And, and if we're going to do that, we might then want to consider, do we do a hundred percent waiver? I mean, if you think about the value that we get from having a fire department in this community that can readily respond to our businesses, our schools and our homes, the tax, so to speak, tails in comparison to what we would pay to have a fully functional and operate, operating fire department.
Now, can I say something?
But I know where.
The way it's written here is not really a waiver, it's a refund or a credit, that would, because they have to complete here, you know, get them to do that.
Yeah, however you guys figure it out on your end, I, I'm just throwing some, and I, and I know that's easier said than done, I get it, but I'm just throwing this out because again, I'm looking at sort of the value. I mean, technically, the municipality has the responsibility for providing fire service in the community. It's not typically a school district responsibility. However, there is this piece of legislation. We all benefit from being supportive. Hopefully, knock on wood, we don't benefit, but I can tell you that it seems that every Saturday morning at about six forty-five, I hear a fire truck screaming down Perkyomen Avenue. Somebody somewhere is pulling that alarm every Saturday morning at six forty-five. And then, you know, I, I would throw out another option, which is, you know, maybe this sort of fifth option is give it a year and see what happens. So figure out what we want to do, do it for a year and, you know, and, and come back and tell us if it, if it's grown, if it's had an impact, if it's really done something. So I'm just throwing those options out there for, for discussion with the board. I, I sort of like a year ago sort of thought, well, you know, this really isn't our obligation, why, why, you know, why should a school district do this, et cetera, et cetera? But I think there are some things, when you step back and you look at the quality of the service that we get for really, you know, for, pretty much, I mean, your fire taxes point, Mike, what was it, point seven oh, seven oh five mils?
What was it? I think it's point seven oh one.
Point seven oh one mils, okay, so that's, that's, that's not a, that's not a significant mileage for the responsiveness and professionalism that we get. So I don't know if any of those ideas appeal to anybody, I just wanted to sort of throw them out on the table.
I like your ideas, I think we need to do something. But I think I struggle with the fact that it should be there to all firefighters, based, not based on a percentage, because like I said, assessments are different. I mean, when your house is built, where you build it, how big it is. So my tax credit might be twelve hundred dollars, Mike's might be three hundred, and we're putting in the same scale of money. So I'm looking at more of a flat fee or a percentage if I were to look at it, but I will say I will abstain from voting from this. With all transparency, my husband is a firefighter, not technically active, but it is in his future, so I'd benefit from this, so.
And to answer Mrs. Shaver's earlier question about the township tax number, it was thirty-one hundred and forty-six thousand. That was close, I think I said thirty-two hundred. That was the, that was the tax credit given, and it was actually split across fourteen individuals and twelve of them own property in Exeter. I just wanted to grab the exact numbers.
So this is a less than, wow.
Yeah, and then, and listen, I don't want to, I don't want to discredit the township tax credit, but again, I'm, I'm here as a, I'm, I'm here fighting for my members because I know that ninety percent of their tax bill is the school district, and I know that this would make a major difference in our retention and recruitment efforts.
Chris, do you have anyone on payroll right now at the department?
Yes.
They're not eligible, correct, for this?
They are not eligible. So currently, to answer Mr. Morgan's question, during the daytime hours, we have part-time staff that cover the hours from six AM to six PM. And that's been in place for thirty years now.
And if you continue to go with your volun, volunteerism rate or the reduction that you've seen over the last, let's say, five years, when do you foresee you would have to start hiring full-time employees in the department of the township?
The chief has already, the, the fire chief has already talked to the township and told them that within the next two to three years, to start planning and budgeting for full-time career status.
And that will be in the overnight as well, not just during the day?
Potentially, that's what they're looking at. They're looking at twenty-four, seven coverage, just because it's getting harder and harder, you know, to get people to come out.
Last question, if, if this was to go through or how the township one works, your, your firefighters that are eligible for it, they have to, they have to redo that paperwork every year, it's not a one-time thing, and then it's, they're, they just go at, every year they have to redo all that paperwork in order to get that credit back?
Correct. For the township, I just sent out an email to everyone that was eligible with the revised application for two thousand and twenty-one tax credit. They have to fill that paperwork out, and I, I can share with you the application, I have it with me. And they also have to turn in their real estate, paid real estate tax bill as proof and also their W-2 from the previous year. Thank you.
Mr. Jordan, do you have any thoughts as to why, by the way, when, when was this legislation passed?
The newest legislation?
Yeah.
This was passed November, October two thousand twenty.
Okay. Do, do you have any thoughts, or tell a board member, do you have any thoughts as to why in all that time, with five hundred-plus school districts in Pennsylvania, only two have implemented this?
I have a thought for sure. And it came up at our, again, I want to say this politely, you have to understand that of all of these school districts in Pennsylvania and many fire departments in Pennsylvania, in Exeter Township, we have a very aggressive fire department. And again, I don't want to toot our own horn, but we, we take advantage of the programs that are offered to us to try to help benefit the community as much as possible, whether it be through grants. In the last ten years, we've probably received over two million dollars in grants for various things, equipment, you know, cost avoidances for the taxpayers. The other fire departments don't do that. They don't take the time to come to their school board meetings and present presentations like this, they don't take the time to go to their municipalities to prevent programs like this. And quite honestly, some of them probably don't even know about it. The, the fire departments don't even know about it. Again, just being candid, I, I know I'm being recorded.
And I'll say to that point, I mean, something you guys just did in the past week was push the township to have a special meeting because your new ladder truck, you know, was slated to have a, a potential ten percent increase on that, which would have cost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more, or a hundred and seventy thousand dollars more for that truck. So, you know, I think that you guys are out in front of this trying to do, you know, as much as you can to minimize the impact on the taxpayer. And again, I'll come back to saying that the fire services that we have in this community for what we pay at this point is pretty darn good.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Thank you, we appreciate that.
That's all right, Mike. You get the gray hair, it's a little fair. But fifty-year taxpayer, I mean, I promise, his father, Bob Jordan, we all know, he's a fire chief for fifty years, he's saved his life. But, but the fire tax, most of that went for the new power plant. That's been a plus from one point seven to five. And all we have now is nineteen-nine. That's been reversioned over time. So a lot of the fire tax is going to maintain the equipment, basically, but we have a twenty-year plan, we have a five together. So a lot of the fire tax money is already going to infrastructure. So, and, and I don't know who mentioned it, but I did the calculation, wish I could sit here and remember how much we have to pay in this community. If it goes a hundred percent thing, you'll see your taxes. I know, may as well have them there, and then they can keep you in, so, or, so. I, I know it's asking a lot for the school to give Bob, but actually, who has that? You know, we're all in this together. These three guys come out to her house, to the school, that mind's going.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Fiddler, you had asked why, presidency, most schools. From Pasbo, top management managers across the state, the problem is you have two different taxing entities, even though they're the same municipality, you're basically taking the taxes from one and giving it together. You know, the municipality has a special fire tax, they can raise taxes, but they don't, so they're, the school district take their tax money and give it somewhere else. And that, that's the concern, you know, Pasbo, PSBA has, they're basically double taxing. You know, take the school taxes and give it to them as well, to cover their responsibility.
Thank you. But I mean, you know, legislatively, legislatures. Well, no, 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 I mean, I, I mean, I, you know, I, I get it. I mean, I, you know, I'm not thrilled that the legislature decides to spend a little money, but at the same time, you know, I'm not going to be calling Harrisburg if, you know, my shed's on fire, you know, so, you know, that factors into it as well.
Mr. Jordan, has there been any discussion, you know, considering that you, you said you mentioned to the township, or the township's aware that they, that there would be a need for, for full-time firefighters in, in the future? Has there been any consideration made by the township of increasing the fifty percent to a hundred percent?
Great question. We have not proposed to them, that, to them yet. However, that it was sort of a gentleman's agreement, the last time we proposed fifty percent, that we would go back to the board and propose the one hundred percent. I'm sure all of you know that that board has turned over nearly, I think it's eighty percent.
Yeah.
So at this point, we would need to repropose that to the new board. There has been no discussion in regards to that with the new board that just took place on January fourth or fifth, whatever date that was. And again, to Mr. Japina's point, the priority was to get the fire apparatus approved due to the potential tack, uh, price increase on that apparatus. But you're, you're, you're reading the tea leaves that that's coming up next with the township.
Yeah, just curious, thank you.
And Mr. Mella, would seem to me that if, if the township's nut on this so far is less than thirty-two hundred dollars to get a, you know, improved capability, and now it costs you sixty-two hundred dollars versus what it would cost to have a fully functioning, employed, twenty-four-seven fire department, you know, kind of makes sense.
True.
Chris, in order for your department, if we made this decision to take full advantage of the credit, when, when would this vote need to happen? By, by what date in order for you to get that advantage?
I don't know. I was a little bit confused. I know Mr. Fike sent, when we were dealing with Mr. Aaron's last year, when we made the original proposal, you guys, your, your fiscal budget and fiscal calendar is a little bit different than the township. I think they run, they run on a calendar budget, correct?
And, 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 so, thank you. Correct me, but I think this would have to be in the tax report, if you, if you're going to do it for next year.
Well, I guess it would depend on the, the ultimate form of what was decided to be allowed. If it was a, a sort of a flat thing that, like you have for your other volunteer, which I didn't really have.
It would be in the budget itself.
Right.
Right.
Right. So if you handled it that way, then you wouldn't necessarily have to. If it's going to adjust tax rates, then yes.
So I think, I think the ultimate goal, to answer your question, Mr. Morgan, would be to somehow get this approved so that it could affect the taxes that were paid in August. If that's not possible, I'm not sure when the next timeframe is. Again, your budget runs a little bit differently than the township. So if it can't be effective for the two thousand and twenty-one slash two thousand and twenty-two budget, then it would have to go to the two thousand and twenty-two slash two thousand and twenty-three. But I'm, I'm not sure of your timeframe. I know, I know you guys approve your budgets in June, so I, I guess the next step would be to try to get something approved for next year's budget? Is that accurate?
Yeah, you can't, you can't make it retroactive.
Yeah, we only have those three months, three open fire budgets.
Right.
We've passed that timeframe.
So I guess to answer your question, it would be as soon as possible to affect the June budget approved.
So, Mr. Mella, I, I agree with Mr. Japina that this is a, it's a cause, I think that we have a lot of options on ways we can do it. I don't, I personally don't know that I'd be ready to vote on a decision of how we do that this month, because I think that we need to see a preliminary budget from our administration. We can certainly take a, you know, I would think that we could take a straw poll of, of an agreement of an idea that we like. You know, Mr. Japina offered five different ideas, I think they all had their own validity, and then see how that works into the preliminary budget, and then decide whether we would have to reduce it, whether that plan worked. But I don't know that I could make a decision tomorrow without seeing the preliminary budget for next year. That's just my thought.
Yeah, I, I guess the, it would be a question, a good question, actually. Maybe the administration might even have an answer for now. I know we, it was presented in, last year for, for, for this year's budget, that there was a three-year plan to try to eliminate the structural deficit. And I, I, I think probably, you know, one of the big questions I would have is what would this do, you know, to that plan of, of eliminating that structural deficit?
Can I make a suggestion? I think the first thing you really need to do is authorize a solicitor to, to legality and really research this person.
Correct.
Before we even talk further.
Yes, right, yeah, you're, you're right.
So I mean, that, that might be the first step.
You're right. And that's where it left, that's where it left off in June.
Maybe push, push that to the voting meeting.
I mean, Mr. Fike, with all due respect, that's kind of where we left at the last time.
And they never had the solicitor further.
Right, so I guess why.
So they need to make a, a motion at, at the voting meeting to authorize the solicitor to do it. In fact, the Bay of West never happened before.
Yeah, whatever the process is, quite honestly, before you guys want to spend taxpayer money for the solicitor to research it, I mean, maybe someone wants to reach out to the solicitor at this other district.
I'd be happy to do that. Yeah, I'm, I'm sure I know who he is.
That'd be great, I mean, but I know they have to approve you to do that too, so.
It seemed to me that if the intent, I mean, we're, we're only in February, right, so the intent is to try to get something, you know, up or down vote, whatever that's going to be, you know, we, we have some time to do it, right? I mean, we're gonna, for, if, if it's for next, next tax for, for our twenty-two, twenty-three school year, that, that would be the budget we're approving in June, right?
And I could also look at some of those parameters, at some of the different options that were mentioned in terms of how they're going to hold up. Because if you're adjusting taxes, it's a different legal question than if you're giving some sort of, you know, benefit that you do already.
A refund or a rebate.
Right.
So we, i- if that is a consensus of the board, are we saying we do want to put something in the voting agenda next month to authorize the solicitor to investigate the options that Mr. Japina presented here tonight? I know.
And again, just to reiterate, this is, this is our proposal, we wanted to present it to you guys. I think Mr. Japina brought up some great points, I think Mrs. Shaffer brought up some great points as far as how the program could be structured. The main purpose of the presentation is to express the importance of this. And we understand that, you know, there's a lot of due diligence that you guys need to do on your end to make sure that it works. But it would be very impactful.
Mr. Jordan, I just want to say thank you for coming out again. I'm not saying that to dismiss you, just saying, I do believe it's important that we continue this conversation. I do feel like we kind of kicked the can for a while there with this, but I would like to see us definitely keep this conversation going so we do get to a conclusion. I'm a big supporter of the fire department. I used to be involved with the EMS when I was younger, so to me, it's very important. But with that said, my priority has always been that our money goes to educating our kids. I liked what Julie said also, that if we're going to give an incentive, it should be to all firefighters or volunteers, not just to the few that are homeowners. So if I were to move forward and, and agreeing to something, I'd probably lean more towards the five ninety-nine per firefighter. So yeah, if we can definitely keep this going, that would be great.
The only thing I would say to that is again, the ordinance or the legislature that was passed was based off of the real estate taxes, by paying, by paying the real estate taxes, getting that credit back. So again, I think the solicitor would have to research that. But if you have a program in place already where by doing certain criteria, you can get money from the school district, the issue is those individuals aren't paying taxes. You see what I'm saying? Like you mentioned every firefighter.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
Pretty, pretty good for not being a lawyer, chief. How about, if you're focused on any, like, if you're not a department, if that is, uh, if you have a, if you have a child, like, I took it for a second, see if we can get directed to volunteer to guard the department. Somebody that's got some medical skills or something like that, and they can create a department. It's been an honor and privilege and something higher than helping finance, when you fired our accountant, company, or enterprise, so doing stuff to try to save money, you, you, tax rate, you know, is a very, very mission of these, these, and, 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 but if you know anybody who's bored out, okay, they're, they're being cheap, so, so, how's that?
I got to put my third kid year old to work.
One more year.
Needs to get off video games. No, I mean, you don't want me, trust me.
Bob, you have, Bob, you have fourteen of us that have either been putting out fires for the last two years, or fanning them, I'm not sure. But yeah, we're familiar with fires. But thank you for your effort too, and for your recruitment, and for your commitment to Exeter Township. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
That's it for my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mella. Policy Committee, Dr. Hamburger?
Thanks, Dr. Harris. We have one item on the agenda this evening for discussion. It's first reading for policy eight oh five, which is emergency preparation and response. I'll let Mrs. Harris talk a little bit about why this is on the agenda, and what kind of modifications or, or changes are in the draft that we can expect to see at, at the next voting meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. So the revisions to this policy center around addition of language related to threat assessment teams. You've been hearing that theme from me over the past couple of policy revisions. So this is following that similar vein. We also updated our safe-to-save procedures to reference threat assessment teams as well. There's also a revision in this policy. If you recall, beginning of the pandemic, PSBA endeavored to review all of their policies as it relates to the pandemic in thinking about things we haven't thought about before as school districts. And so there's an update to this policy around emergency planning that actually references language related to alternative instruction in the event of an emergency. And it's not specific to what that alternative instruction is. It just acknowledges the idea that as part of emergency preparedness, school districts need to think about that idea of alternative instruction in that process. Next month, you're going to be seeing from us sort of our culminating policy related to threat assessment teams. It will be a brand-new policy, again, as a result of Act forty-four of two thousand and eighteen and subsequent amendments to that act.
Thanks, Mrs. Harris. And, and one of the things that I, a few of the things that I saw in this, in this revision indicated that there were some additional hyperlinks and references to either statute.
Yep, there's some updates to citations.
Yep. And then, as you had mentioned, the continuity of learning, there's a whole section called continuity of student learning core operations, and that's what you're referring to in terms of the changes that really allow districts to, based on emergency conditions, to be able to kind of provide the sort of a modified instructional format, whether it's a web-based instruction or other forms of assignments that might be mailed to the back.
Correct. And that, part of that update in that section is related to the citation in that it connects it to our calendar policy as well, which we revised some time ago, which also includes that language around alternative instruction during emergencies.
And, and you also mentioned the safe-to-save procedures. I just wanted to reiterate that those, those procedures are not subject to approval or word modification, that's simply a, an attachment. And it's, it would kind of constitute more administrative regulations than anything else, I guess, although it's not explicitly titled that. But the safe, the safe procedures have been modified as well, I think, to accommodate some of the same things that you just referenced, particularly the threat assessment. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding the proposed, uh, policy revision?
Dr. Hamburger, I just have a question, just generally, you know. There hasn't been a bigger crisis over the last two years than, you know, COVID, but, you know, so we've, you know, we've sort of gotten away from some of the other potential crises. Do you anticipate anything emerging? I mean, I know student mental health is clearly an issue, and the things that can evolve out of student mental health, whether it's suicide, or violence, or drug abuse, or whatever. And do you, do you believe as part of the budgeting process that you have what you need or will be able to get what you need, whether it's through SRS funding or through the district in order to address those issues?
So all good questions, Mr. Japina. Yes, we definitely, you know, so right about the pandemic, and that is one of the big, you know, crises that we faced over the last two years. But I would reiterate that the mental health crisis has traveled right along with that. And so to that end, we do have some initiatives that we're undertaking. I'd be glad to go into more detail with the board in a presentation if you'd like. But again, as we've had these larger conversations, I've referenced things like additional trainings that we need to do with staff at all levels, the development of comprehensive crisis response teams across the district. And I'll teeter on the line there of talking about school safety in, in, you know, public session. But to answer that question, yes, there are definitely some things on the horizon that we're working on in that, in that venue, and I can present on them. There are trends in our data related to mental health, so we've had a significant increase in mental health referrals. We've had an increase in student fights, which is a nationwide trend, not just an Exeter trend as well. And so, again, refocusing on a comprehensive look at all of those aspects of school safety and. of school safety and, and student wellness. To answer the question about the budget, we will see, um, we're working on that right now, we're in the process, and we're submitting our budgets to Mr. Fike, and then they'll go through budget review process, so I'm hopeful, again, I think the board, uh, has a really good understanding of that idea, that student basic needs need to be met in order for students to be able to learn, and mental health is a basic need.
Thank you.
Mrs. Harris, when, when we look at these policies, and they are so important, um, you know, I think about just this year, you know, we've had a, you know, that I'm aware of, at least one incident at the junior high school and at the senior high school, when those incidences happen, do you, does, does your department take time to do some kind of a debrief, look at the policies, you know, have a, have an opportunity to learn from what we did, what we could have done different, did we adhere to how the policy was supposed to act, 'cause obviously we do drills, but can't always guarantee, you know, a lot of this is on the fly, that, that you guys have to make these decisions, so just, just curious is when something happens, what, what the after looks like?
So, uh, yes, part of it is looking at policy, but more importantly, it's about looking at regulations and procedures that we have in place, and the frameworks that we have in place for being able to respond to different crises and different incidents, and so that's really what we debrief on, is, is our framework in place, that we have in place right now effective, do we need to streamline that framework, what additional things do we need to add, what resources do we need, et cetera, et cetera, so for example, um, when we had the, um, unfortunate student death over the holiday break, part of that process, as we moved into the week when school came back, was we met as a team at the high school to do a debrief and discuss things that we felt went well, things about our process that we wanted to tweak, um, things that we felt like we still needed to follow up on in that process as students came back from school, et cetera. So one of the things that we'll be looking at, just to give you a little, a little more insight, um, with regard to crisis response, is, uh, a comprehensive training for all stakeholders that are involved in crisis response, I have something that I'm working on with the IU, um, that they are going to sort of be, uh, rolling out countywide in terms of a research-based crisis response, um, but of course, I asked for Exeter to be first, uh, in the training, um, and, uh, part of that is training stakeholders that are district-level team stakeholders, meaning district administrators, and then also training folks who are doing direct response, that would be counselors, school psychologists, social workers, et cetera, and then working within that, it's sort of incidents command framework that you'll often hear law enforcement reference, um, in order to deploy our teams when we have incidents and crises.
Thank you.
More to come.
Any other questions on the policy? For, for our, um, very involv- I think very thorough, uh, program of student, uh, safety, you know, I, I'm, I'm very impressed, uh, you know, I've seen, um, other districts attempt to implement, you know, mental health and school safety initiatives, and I think we're doing a great job here, uh, from my, you know, three-thousand-foot view, let's say, so thanks, thanks very much for all your work.
We have a very committed team here at us.
I see it. Uh, that's all for my report, thanks, Dr. Herring.
Thank you. Um, at this point, we move to public comment, I don't have anyone signed up on the sheet, and there's really no one here, so I'm assuming there'll be no comments tonight, um, we're going to be moving forward the following items to our voting agenda, the meeting minutes, the soaring eagle, conference requests, statewide tax recovery, per capita tax exemptions, we're gonna move to vote to allow our solicitor to further investigate the firefighter tax credit and options, and lastly, uh, the policy for first reading. At this point, are there any board members that would like to be heard? Okay, then that concludes our committee of a whole meeting, we'll be back Tuesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, for our voting meeting, thank you.